Stand by.
This is a public service announcement. New Jersey Governor Phil Murphy has issued executive orders limiting the size of public gatherings. The city council will meet today with all voting members of the city council remotely by telephonic conferencing system.
Thank you. We'll now move into the agenda review session. We have approval of minutes, report of correspondence by the city clerk, public hearings, ordinances on second reading, one, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick for handicap parking at eighty-six right place, two, amend the management salary ordinance for twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-two. And we have ordinances on first reading. One, an ordinance to grant an easement to the City of New Brunswick right of way for the State Theater. Two, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick to add electric scooter violations. And we have resolutions one through thirty-eight. One, approve agenda amendments. Two, approve payroll. Three, authorize refund for redeemed tax sales certificates. Four, approve award of contract with associated humane societies. Five, authorize extension of contract with wellness coaches. Six, authorize professional service agreement with Charlie Gaden. Seven, authorize professional service agreement with Taxi of Schwartz Law Group. Eight, authorize professional service agreement with Hoben, Longo, Moran, Dunst, and Dukas. Nine, authorize professional service agreement with D. Francesco, Bateman, Kuntzman, Davis, Lehrer, and Plam. Ten, authorize professional service agreement with B. R. B. Valuation and Consulting Services. Eleven, authorize professional service agreement with Vital Communications. Twelve, authorize professional service agreement with Adams, Raymond, Hagan Associates. Thirteen, authorize professional service agreement with Spatial Data Logic. Fourteen, authorize professional service agreement with Vital Communications. Fifteen, authorize professional service agreement with Instinct Municipal Data Systems. Sixteen, authorize professional service agreement with Mount McDonald Group. Seventeen, authorize tax collector to transfer credits on several tax and utility accounts. Eighteen, authorize professional service agreement with Willen, Skolman, and Spitzer. Nineteen, authorize professional service agreement with Samuel Klein and Company. Twenty, approve award of contract with Business and Governmental Insurance Agency. Twenty-one, authorize professional service agreement with Bridgewater Veterinary Hospital. Twenty-two, authorize professional service agreement with Robert Wood Johnson Physician Enterprise. Twenty-three, approve emergency temporary appropriations for twenty-twenty-one. Twenty-four, approve agreement for the use of sixty thousand dollars of CDBG funds to the Union County Economic Development Corporation. Twenty-five, authorize award of professional service agreement with Arthur Thabeau Esquire. Twenty-six, authorize professional service agreement with Omsom Engineering. Twenty-seven, approve award of contract with Lucas Brothers. Twenty-eight, approve award of contract to furnish and deliver by two minutes materials for the Department of Public Works and Water Utility. Twenty-nine, approve amendment of resolution R dash zero-one-two-zero-eight-zero for a contract extension. Thirty, authorize professional service agreement for Phoenix Advisors. Thirty-one, award professional service agreement to Delaware Rowerton Engineering. Thirty-two, award professional service agreement to McManaman, Scotland, and Baumann. Thirty-three, award professional service agreement to Big Now Planning Consultants. Thirty-four, authorize professional service agreement with Dan Zagar and Markoff. Thirty-five, approve amendment of resolution R dash zero-nine-two-zero-three-zero to extend the contract for an additional year. Thirty-six, authorize award of professional service agreement with Eurofin QC. Thirty-seven, approve authorization for fire department to sign agreement with Robert Wood Johnson Health Network. Thirty-eight, authorize to furnish and install thirty-two new decorative streetlight poles and associated wiring in connection with the renovation of Ethan Avenue, Fresh Street, and Albany Street intersection. Then we have items for discussion by the council. Public comment, reminder that the next review session is February third at five-thirty PM, followed by the city council meeting. And I will now call the meeting to order. Will the clerk please call the floor?
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes, here.
Councilmember Egan.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Council President Secora Ludwig.
Here. Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act have been complied with and satisfied, and that the annual notice, which gave sufficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public meetings of the Municipal Council of the City of New Brunswick, has been filed with the city clerk, has been placed on the appropriate bulletin board, and posted in the back vestibule of City Hall visible to the public through the windows in the lobby of City Hall, New Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the City of New Brunswick, namely, the Home News Tribune. Additionally, a forty-eight hour notice of time, place, and manner of conducting this meeting has been made by the city clerk on January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one, as is required by law.
New Jersey Governor Phil Murphy has issued executive orders limiting the size of public gatherings. The city council will meet today with all voting members of the city council remotely by the telephonic conferencing system. The city council intends to meet on a regular schedule and will meet with the guidelines of the Open Public Meetings Act by utilizing telephonic conferencing systems. Public participation at public meetings have been revised, and the public may participate through a telephonic call-in system. The public is encouraged to call into the conference call system through the phone numbers and access codes transmitted in the forty-eight hour notice and posted in the back vestibule of City Hall visible to the public through the windows. Some city employees will also be available via conference call through the meeting as well. All on the conference call will have the opportunity to hear the city council meeting. During the portions of the meeting that are not open for public comment, all callers from the public will be muted, and the council will not be able to hear any public comment through the conference system. During the public comment period on the conference call call-in line, who have interest in addressing the council will first be organized by last name and then called upon to speak. After all organized members of the public speak, they are to speak once and for no more than five minutes in any given public meeting portion. A timer will chime at the completion of each five-minute period, and I will notify you that your time has expired. Public meeting access or public meeting assistants accessing the calling number should call City Hall at seven-three-two-seven-four-five-five-zero-zero-seven.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You're welcome. Will everyone please stand for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it is founded, one and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in a moment of silence to reflect and honor our military personnel and law enforcement officers who dedicate their lives to protect our freedom, safety, and democracy. May God guide them faithfully in their duties. Thank you. Can I have approval of the minutes, please?
Motion and a minute.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan. Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Secora Ludwig.
Yes.
Madam Clerk, do we have any correspondence?
Council President, the correspondence received by the city clerk's office has been forwarded to the appropriate departments for further action.
Thank you. We have no public hearings tonight. Now we'll move on to ordinances for discussion on second reading. One, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title X, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter ten point two-zero, Handicap Parking, Section ten point two-zero-point-zero-one-zero, Schedule three-nine, Parking Zone for Handicap Persons at eighty-six right place. And at this time, we are preparing to open the meeting to the public comment on this ordinance only for up to no longer than five minutes. Will the clerk please prepare a list?
Sure, Council President. For the members who would like to speak on this ordinance, I will organize the speakers by last name, beginning with the letters A through D. A, B, C. E through H. I through L. M through P. Q through T. U through W. X, Y, and Z. Are there any members of the public who would wish to speak on this ordinance?
Unmuted.
We'll ask one more time. Members that would like this ordinance? Council President?
Move the ordinance.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Hearing, hearing done, I'll close the public hearing.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Secora Ludwig.
Yes.
Item number two, amend the management salary ordinance for twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-two. And at this time, we are preparing to open the meeting to public comment on this ordinance only for no longer than five minutes. Madam Clerk, will you please prepare a list?
Yes. For the members of the public who wish to speak on this ordinance, I will organize the speakers by last name, beginning with the letters A through D. E through H. I through L.
Charlie Cradaville.
Okay, Mr. Cradaville. M through P. Q through T. U through W. X, Y, and Z. Are there any public who would like to speak on this ordinance? I'll ask one more time if there's any members of the public who would like to speak on the ordinance on second reading. Council President, the person, the name of the individual that we have on the list is Mr. Charlie Cradaville.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Cradaville, can you please just state your name, spell your last name, and address for the record?
Sure. Charlie Cradaville, C-R-A-T-O-V-I-L, and I live here in the Second Ward of New Brunswick. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to address you on this ordinance. I wanted to ask what the purpose of the ordinance is. I do see, you know, Mr. Jones's new position being added to the management salary ordinance, but what are the other things changing here?
I think it would be more efficient if I asked Mr. Goldberg if you could go through the changes for us.
Sure. Excuse me. Council President, the changes reflect the new titles that are in the new Department of Human and Community Services. So the other new titles are the Chief Code Enforcement Officer and Chief Inspector.
Okay, and so those are two new titles, and those folks are getting a pay bump with their title change?
I do not have their current salaries, but I do believe there were increases in the salaries, yes.
Okay, and maybe you can tell me who those folks are. Code enforcement, Chief Code Enforcement Officer is Mr. Atkins, or?
No, that is Mr. Tony Barber.
Tony Barber, really? The same guy that works for the police department?
He no longer works for the police department. He was transferred into the Department of Human and Community Services.
Well, that's interesting. Any reason why?
We believe that he's the best person to fulfill the responsibilities of Chief Code Enforcement Officer.
Okay, and so is somebody going to take over his position at the police department? He was the office manager or something like that? No, okay. But he's getting a pay bump possibly. How about the Chief Sanitation Inspector? Who is that going to be?
I believe that's Mr. Gonzalez.
And I do see, I've asked about this before, but the mayor is in the range number ninety-eight, which has a minimum salary of ninety thousand, but of course, the mayor's salary is less than half that. Why is that?
I really cannot answer that question at this time. It's credible.
Okay, well, I'll follow up. I mean, I suspect it's because he's a part-time employee, and I just wanted to clarify, you know, what the, you know, why he's in that range. But I'll follow up later. The only other point I wanted to make is that while, you know, these, you know, two or three folks are getting a pay bump here, well, I also, I had another question. I'm sorry, the, I see also, I read an article and tapped into that Captain Miller has been promoted to Deputy Director Miller, and I want to understand if that comes with a pay bump, and do we still have a Deputy Chief as well as a Deputy Director now, or did Chief Sabo?
That's correct. We have both.
I think I.
Council President, yes.
No, go ahead. Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Cradaville, we have both a Deputy Director of Police and a Deputy Chief of Police.
Okay, and you don't happen to know the new salary for the Deputy Director, do you?
His salary is the same as the Deputy Chief's.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you for that. Final point I wanted to make, well, you know, obviously, some people are getting a pay bump here. It's obviously really tough times for a lot of people. I know many city workers were furloughed last year and, you know, have not seen raises in some time. And I'll just reiterate that, you know, one city employee who definitely deserves a raise is your city clerk. Her and her team do great work. They are the definition of essential employees. A lot of the work they have to do, they have to do in person because they're dealing with records and elections and stuff like that. And I know it's a difficult and complicated job, and they do a really good job. And so I just wanted to advocate, if anybody's getting a raise, it should be her and her team. You know, I look at, I read articles of, you know, other cities in Trenton. They've got a really problematic city clerk who's being paid a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars and, you know, has a toxic, you know, kind of relationship with a lot of the administration and is causing all sorts of problems. Here, we have a really good clerk, and I think that she deserves a raise and the people working on it as well. So, you know, instead of making, making the highest-paid employees even higher paid and, you know, finding Tony Barber a new job, you know, we should be prioritizing the truly essential folks like the city clerk. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cradaville. Hearing no more public, the public comment portion is closed, and I hear a motion.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Secora Ludwig.
Yes.
And I'll move on to ordinances for first reading. One, an ordinance to grant an easement into the City of New Brunswick right of way for the State Theater Marquee Sign Encroachment on Livingston Avenue, Block twelve, Lot twenty-four point oh-one.
I move the adoption of this ordinance on first reading and set the matter down for a hearing on February third, twenty-twenty-one, at five-thirty, and that's according to the law.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Secora Ludwig.
Yes.
Number two, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title X, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter ten point zero-four, General Provisions, Administration and Enforcement, Section ten point zero-four-point-zero-nine-zero, Designation of Parking Offenses to Add Electric Scooter Violations.
I move the adoption of this ordinance on first reading and set the matter down for a hearing on February third, twenty-twenty-one, at five-thirty, and that the same be advertised according to law.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Secora Ludwig.
We now have resolutions one through thirty-eight. At this time, we will prepare to open the meeting to public comment on the resolution only for up to five minutes per person. Madam Clerk, will you please prepare a list?
Unmuted. Muted.
In order to assure that the city council can hear from the interested public and that the public can hear public comments, I will organize the speakers in order by last name. In a moment, I will unmute the public call-in. At that time, I will ask for you to provide me your last name, then first name, beginning with the letters A through Z. After asking three times, the Council President will then close the public comment portion for the resolution. Please be mindful that your voice is being telephonically transmitted and to speak slowly and clearly for the benefit of all. I will ask that you please remain silent when I initially unmute the phone so that we can all hear each other and then begin the speaker registration process. As a reminder, all other members of the public will be muted in order to assure that the city council can clearly hear and understand the recognized speaker. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on the resolution? Beginning with the letters A through D. E through H. I through L.
Charlie Cradaville.
M through P. Q through T. U through W. X, Y, and Z. Again, if there's any members of the public who would like to speak on the resolution. Are there any more members of the public who would like to speak on the resolution? Okay, Council President, the only person on the list is Mr. Charlie Cradaville.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Cradaville, can you please just state your name, spell your last name, your address for the record, and you have the floor for five minutes.
Charlie Cradaville, K-R-A-T-O-V-I-L, Ward two. First one I want to ask you about is number six, Charlie Gaden, not to exceed thirty thousand dollars. I just want to be clear how many Assistant City Attorneys there are and why some of them are, or at least one of them is an employee, and Ms. Gaden is not.
I.
Mr. Shammy, would you like to answer that?
I can answer that question. Actually, they're both employees. They're both part-time employees, and Ms. Gaden, this resolution is to authorize her billing by the hour, which currently is a hundred and fifteen dollars an hour. She does, she does have a salary, and then on certain matters, as are permitted under our ordinance, she's able to bill hourly. Mr. Katniss, who's the other Assistant City Attorney, only has a salary, and he is not billing by the hour.
Okay. Can you tell me the salary for those two?
I want to say Ms. Gaden is, I think, forty-five thousand. I think Mr. Katniss is about thirty-eight thousand, but I'll, I can get you the exact amounts. They, they, they may be off by a few dollars, but I think that's, that's the approximate amount. I don't have the exact amount in front of me.
Okay, thank you, sir. Want to move on to page four, number twenty, the contract with BGIA. Wanted to ask, you know, how they were selected to be the broker and what their commission is or what their fee is for their service here to hook us up with, I guess, prescription programs for the employees?
Thank you. Mr. Goldberg, I'm going to defer to you again, if you don't mind.
Sure. Excuse me. Council President, this was something that went out to bid, and we only received one bid from BGIA, and their commission is twenty-two thousand dollars.
Understood, thank you. Moving on to the next page, twenty-four, agreement with the Union County Economic Development Corporation. I'm curious about what prompted this agreement and, you know, why, why sixty thousand dollars will be appropriated to them? Are they going to, you know, use that money to help businesses in New Brunswick?
All right, Mr. Dominguez, can you give us some information on this, please?
Certainly. So, Union County Economic Development Corporation has been the micro enterprise assistance entity that we've contracted with for, well, twenty-twenty-one would be the fourth year that we've, that we've been working with them. It's been sixty grand per year to cover their administrative costs as they do micro enterprise training in New Brunswick, as well as provide small business and low-income business grants to businesses in the city.
Okay. Moving on to the next page, number thirty, is the Phoenix Advisors Agreement. This is due to prior SEC violations, I believe, and I want to, you know, clarify how much longer the city is required to use Phoenix Advisors or a company like them to ensure that you're following the SEC rules and regulations?
Mr. Mulryan, do you have that information, please?
Yeah, so our financial advisors are used to help with a lot of different updates and processes, such as going out for bonds or bands. They assist with lots of the debt service process, so that's why we retain them for their services. So since I've gotten there, we've continued to use them, and we'll probably continue to use them in the future.
Council President, this is Michael Drill. May I, may I add something to that when the time is appropriate?
Of course.
The, anytime the city does any type of borrowing, we are required by law to have the financial advisor as part of that process. There, I'm not sure Mr. Cradaville is referencing, but we maintain this relationship with Phoenix Advisors because anytime we borrow, by law, we have to have a financial advisor.
Thank you, Mr. Drill.
Understood.
Mr. Cradaville?
Yeah, one more. The, the last page at the top, thirty-five, is Fair Housing Counseling Services. As, as per usual, this award is going to Prab, and I just wanted to ask if anybody knows if Prab is going to remain in the City of New Brunswick? I know they're going to have to leave their headquarters to make way for redevelopment. And does anybody know if they're going to be, you know, relocating to a location in the city?
I'm not sure of that. Mr. Dominguez, do you have any information on that? Are you aware of the situation?
Um, so, nothing concrete. I've, I've not heard where they're going to relocate to, just, just general speculation and rumors, but I don't, I don't know where they're going to, no.
Thank you, Mr. Dominguez.
Well, it would be a shame to lose them. Thank you.
Agreed, and we have no more for public comment?
Correct, Council President.
Thank you.
Move the resolutions?
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Secora Ludwig.
Yes.
And I want to move into a discussion by the council. And first, I just want to acknowledge Mayor Cahill and Public Information Officer Bert Barron, along with the administration, who received an award for the. who received an award for the city from Rutgers University Center for Government Services, the NJSLM and NJMMA, as participants in a statewide municipal information competition. Part of their achievements were an innovative and quick response in keeping the public informed with the onset of the pandemic, which amongst other initiatives included a daily radio show and podcast. And it's also quite an honor, as we were one of only five recipients and the only city in the state. And at this time, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Barron again and everyone involved and, and ask Mr. Barron if he'd like to say a few words about, um, what they've done and this award.
Thank you, Madam President. And you pretty much summed up all the information, the entities that you had referenced there, put out a call for entries, uh, around the middle of the year or so statewide to all the municipalities to submit what they feel is their best and most effective work. And it's sort of, uh, an opportunity for towns to kind of showcase effective methods of communication and our COVID-19 work and a couple of other things, uh, that I thought we did very well. I had entered that into consideration here. And as part of the State League of Municipalities Conference, which of course was moved to a virtual platform this year, like everything was, we didn't get the results of this until sometime in January. And it was, uh, really great to hear that the, the city of New Brunswick received this special award for our COVID-19 coverage. And it's really just a testament to, uh, everyone who works for the city and everyone who lives here and, uh, something we could all be very proud of. So, uh, thank you for acknowledging it and, and thank you for the time in the meeting here this evening. But, um, yeah, it's something that, uh, the city can be proud of on many levels. So, thank you for the, the time, Madam President.
Thank you. And next, I would like to just congratulate, uh, President Biden and Vice President Harris as they were sworn into office today. And not unlike four years ago, we go into a new presidency as a very divided nation with heightened tensions driven by extremists and activists on both sides of the political spectrum. We need to find common ground for the sake of our democracy and the safety of our citizens. I hope President Biden, now the 46th President of the United States of America, nurtures policy that in the end will resonate with the American citizens and our allies across the globe. President Biden has delivered a clear message of unity and must now lay out a roadmap. But we, the American people, are charged with following that path and are beholden to act without truism in our hearts if we seek to overcome despair. God bless the 46th President of the United States and his Vice President as they begin their journey to lead this great nation and a landfill with the most resilient people in the world. Those are my comments for the evening. Um, Council Vice President Escobar, do you have anything you'd like to speak on?
No, I just want to echo your congratulations for giving you the award and all. So, you know, today, to me, I think about it as a day of hope. A, a day that our diversity has, you know, played, a day that a woman is for the first time, a, a Vice President of this nation. Uh, it represents the future for our daughters and, um, granddaughters and not only for, um, for females, but also for, uh, Black and Brown communities. So I, I am very proud and I wish them both, um, health and many, many, um, good wishes and let's move forward in unity and celebrating our diversity. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Uh, Councilman Anderson, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I'd like to wish the, uh, 46th President and his Vice President well during this time. I'd also like to have in touch with Mrs. Moore, who's undergoing some health problems at this time and hasn't been with us, but she says she's doing pretty good and hopes to join us soon.
Thank you, Councilman Anderson. Councilman Egan, do you have anything you'd like to say?
No, thank you.
Councilman Fleming, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Uh, just wishing the new administration well and that things can begin to heal. We can get back to a sense of normalcy, uh, that which a lot of us didn't experience over the last four years. That's it.
Thank you, Councilman Fleming. At this time, we're preparing to open a meeting for public comment for up to five minutes per person. Madam Clerk, will you please prepare a list?
Yes, Council President.
Oh, COVID-19.
At this time, we'll actually, um, open it up for Director Robert Rawls for the OEM COVID-19 update.
My apologies, Director Rawls. I'm very sorry.
Not a problem. Patience is a virtue. Okay, um, COVID-19 vaccination continues to move along in New Jersey. There are now multiple local vaccination sites available for those who are eligible. Current eligible groups include healthcare workers, long-term care residents and staff, first responders, and high-risk individuals. The high-risk category is quite broad and includes all those 65 and older. It also includes those between the ages of 16 and 64 with conditions including COPD, smoking, history, obesity, and type 2 diabetes. Both Robert Wood Johnson and St. Peters are offering vaccinations locally. In addition, there are multiple sites around Middlesex County. For a complete list, please visit the state website covid19newjersey.gov and search for vaccines. Free COVID-19 testing will continue in New Brunswick at Unity Square Community Center on Remsen Avenue every Tuesday from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. There are no appointments necessary for this location. The next date is Tuesday, January 26. COVID-19 testing through Middlesex County Office of Health Services is ongoing at the Scataway. Dates and times, please visit the Middlesex County website or call 732-745-3100 to make an appointment. City also continues to update information about COVID-19 on our website, social media. COVID-19 report podcasts, as mentioned just a while ago, uh, are Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. They can be found on the city website, cityofnewbrunswick.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Rawls. And now, I believe we will open up the public, uh, comment portion of the meeting. Madam Clerk, if you can please prepare a list?
Yes, Council President. For the members of the public who would like to speak on the public portion of the meeting, I will organize the speakers by last name, beginning with the letters A through D, E through H, I-
Unmuted. Muted.
Charlie Cradaville.
Okay. M through P, Q through T.
Thor, S-C-O-R-K.
Okay, Ms. Thor. U, V, W, X, Y, Z. If there are any members of the public who would like to speak during this public portion, part of the meeting. Is there any public who would like to speak? Okay, Council President, I have Mr. Charlie Cradaville first.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Cradaville, can you please state your name, spell your last name, and address for the record?
Charlie Cradaville, K-R-A-T-O-V-I-L, and I still live in Ward 2. Um, wanted to address a few different topics tonight, but I first will extend my congratulations to, uh, Bert Barron on the award-winning podcast. I just wish that he would honor his promise to add New Brunswick Today to his press list and then I would, you know, presumably find out about more things more quickly, um, which I would imagine is the goal of the Public Information Office. But I do sincerely congratulate him on, I know he puts a lot of hard work into what he does and I do enjoy, uh, you know, listening when he interviews people and, and provides information. So, congratulations to him and of course, congratulations to the new President and Vice President. Um, I, I, I agree with, uh, the comments of the council on those, uh, you know, the historic day that we have, uh, before us. Um, I do, uh, also want to say rest in peace to Mr. Thomas Segun, who was, uh, uh, killed in the, um, Hamilton Street, uh, incident, uh, over the weekend. And I think that the city needs to do more to address the crime problem, especially the violent crime, uh, that is plaguing our neighborhoods and holding back our city. And so, to that end, I'd like to ask the newly promoted Deputy Director of the Police Department, if he's here with us today, uh, to, uh, you know, respond to my, uh, uh, questions I've asked about the city's crime map and why it does not display all of the, uh, you know, serious incidents that take place here. And if he can, uh, can he, uh, tell us, is it true that there were at least 20 shootings last year, uh, in the year 2020 in the city of New Brunswick?
Deputy Director Miller, do you have any response from Mr. Cradaville?
Yes, um, we looked into the crime map, as I said we would. Um, we did update the homicides that were, um, labeled as aggravated assaults. I, um, like I spoke two meetings ago where, um, you know, those crimes are originally listed as aggravated assaults and until, um, homicide complaints are approved by the prosecutor's office, that's when that needs to get changed. And, uh, we, we did fall a little behind in getting that updated, but those haven't updated. As far as, um, we broke down everything else and there was really, um, maybe one other discrepancy in the labeling, but there was not too much lost in the crime mapping. As Mr. Cradaville said, everything on there is accurate. Um, and as far as the shootings, um, same response as every meeting that Mr. Cradaville asked, we're not going to comment on the number of shootings.
Okay. So, again, I'll, I'll, I'll keep asking because that's not good enough. Um, we have a problem with shootings and in order to solve the problem, we need to be able to know the scope of the problem. And it would only make sense for the department to track the number of shootings and to provide that, uh, that number at least upon request. Um, so I'm going to continue to find other ways to get this information. I encourage people who know about incidents that are happening in their part of New Brunswick to contact us at New Brunswick Today, either through Facebook or, or you can find my email and phone number at the bottom of every article I write. But, um, a lot of times, these things don't get publicized unless we know about it. Uh, and it's unfortunate because, um, you know, just in the interest of staying safe and staying informed, uh, the police department really should be doing more to publicize, uh, uh, you know, these, these serious violent crimes that, uh, uh, you know, sometimes, uh, uh, result in, in, uh, you know, loss of life. And, uh, I know that, uh, you know, we just, we have to do better. Um, and, uh, you know, I will, uh, you know, on this occasion, just bring up the, the fact that, uh, you know, there was a, a group of people back in, in 2017 that was warning this council about the dangerous president, uh, and calling for the council to take action, to call on, uh, our Congress to impeach the man. And, uh, you know, I went back and looked at the, the council meeting from September 2017. I encourage you to go back and watch it, uh, because, you know, this council really didn't take that threat seriously. And now, of course, everybody's, uh, ready to impeach the president twice, three times, do it as many times as we can. Um, but back then, when we could have really made a difference and New Brunswick really could have led on this issue, the council didn't want to hear it. And ironically, Councilman Fleming criticized me and said that, you know, the re- All right, if I could just finish my sentence, Councilman-
Council President-
The next person on-
Oh.
The next person on the list?
Council President, the next person on the list is Ms. Linda Thorck.
Hello, am I on mute?
Yes, you are. Could you please state your name, spell your last name, and your address for the record, please?
Linda Thorck, S-C-O-R-K, 12 Park Boulevard.
Thank you.
Well, I wish I knew the rest of Charlie's sentence so I, so that I could finish it for him, but I, I don't know the rest of the sentence. That seems, um, unnecessarily rude to cut him off in the middle of the sentence. Um, you know, I, I would have gladly seated the 15 seconds from my time for him to finish a sentence. I wish I could finish it for him. Anyway, um, I had, uh, some questions along the same lines with the, with the shootings. It seems like, is that information just not being supplied in the format of the city council meeting? Or do we as residents not have a right to know this? It seems like it would be very important, a very important thing to know.
I, I do know that our police department reports through the standards that are set, uh, down by the state.
Right, but for example, if we, if we're not informed about how many-
Go ahead, Deputy Director.
Um, Ms. Thorck, the police department, you know, tracks all of our crimes and, um, shootings as well as, shootings as well as other violent crimes are classified as aggravated assault. And that's the way the Uniform Crime Report wants us to report them. To start to break things down in an unofficial format, um, just to satisfy Mr. Cradaville would not be fair, um, to the Uniform Crime Report and other things like that. We're going to continue to report things the way we're required to report them. We're not going to deviate, uh, because one person wants us to. Uh, we know the shootings that are on. We know the stabbings that go on. We know everything that goes on here in the city that we're investigating. We investigate everything fully. Um, as far as the shootings that happened in the past, like I said, it's a test meeting. We're moving, uh, forward with them. They are not dead cases. Um, I'm very confident we're going to bring most of them to a, a conclusion where we can, uh, proceed with prosecution. Uh, but as far as breaking down numbers that are not official classifications for the Uniform Crime Report, we're not going to do that.
Thank you, Deputy Director.
So, it wouldn't just- So, that doesn't really answer my question. I said, do the citizens not have a right to this? It's not for Charlie. I mean, it's for Charlie as he's obviously a citizen of New Brunswick, but, um, just in general, these are things that if we know, uh, for example, and it doesn't have to be official, you do whatever kind of report you have to do for the Uniform, um, Crime Report and certainly enter the data however they want it entered. But it doesn't seem like it would be that hard to keep a running tally of shootings. Because, for example, one thing that I was going to suggest is, have we, um, considered if, if the shootings are up, doing a gun buyback program? Some of the other cities have done, uh, very successful guns, you know, programs to get guns off the street. But if we don't know how many of the assaults were committed with guns, then how do we know if that would be a good thing to suggest? I have a feeling it would, but, but, and also specifically, um, we're, uh, fortunate to not have a lot of gun violence in our neighborhood with one spectacular exception. Has there been any progress? I know the director spoke, uh, in general about the, um, cases moving forward, but how about that, um, mass gangland-style shooting over here on Bellville Street? Any progress there? Because it seems strange to just hear nothing for all these months.
Oh, I, I've given a report at almost every meeting about that. And I'm not going to discuss the details of the case, but yes, we are making progress. I've, it's been asked at almost every meeting and, again, I can't tell you the details of what we're doing there because that would compromise the investigation. But as I said before, we are making progress and I'm confident the complaints will be coming. And when that does happen, I can give you a comprehensive report, but until that time, I can't tip our hand on what we're working on.
Okay, I mean, yeah, I know. I'm one of the ones that's been asking about, uh, I'm one of the ones that's been asking about it, but I, I feel like we kind of get the same answer every, and like any kind of, or even like something in- and like any kind of, or even like something in the paper about ongoing investigation, if anybody has any information, call this number.
Ms. Thor, your time is complete. Thank you for your comments. And there are no other members of the public as asked, Madam Clerk.
Correct.
Madam Pres-
President.
If I may?
Excuse me?
May I say something, Madam President?
Of course.
I think as far as the, uh, two thousand seventeen impeachment goes, uh, we all said that it wasn't going well, but it's not our job to impeach the President. We all basically took care of that and we saw it coming up, that he would not be out of office or anything like that. We weren't going to waste our time with that as we have some local things to do. As far as being rude, uh, I think it's necessary for the callers to make sure that they're within the five minutes and perhaps sometimes they don't need to say something, uh, that they already are saying. In fact, I think it might be rude for the other, for that person to harm and be rude to the other people who want to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Anderson.
Oh, she knew it, Jerry. Can I just, uh, can I just echo that real, since my name was mentioned? Uh, going back to two thousand seventeen, if we saw what happened, uh, like two weeks ago in the Capitol, a local vote in the city council wouldn't have made even the slightest iota of a difference on what was going on. And at the time, we had other business to take care of. That's all.
Your entry is not valid. You, Councilman Fleming, is there any other comments from the council to address? Hearing no other comments, the public force is closed and I'll ask for an adjournment.
Second.
Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Socorro Ludwig.
Yes, thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Night.